Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. The March 26th meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission is now in session. Report of posting of agenda, please, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The agenda was posted here at City Hall on Friday in accordance with state and local procedures.
Thank you. First item is the minutes of January 22nd. Are there any additions or corrections? Motion.
Chairman, item of approval as submitted.
I'll second. Oops. Motion by Mr. Matthews, second by Mr. Grinch. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Minutes are approved unanimously. First item on the agenda is public comments. Anybody wishing to address the Commission on Planning Issues in the City of Palm Springs, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, closed public comments. Jumping down on the agenda, item number five, architectural approval. Case 3.2308, application by Aguacalliente Development Authority for golf clubhouse located at 1097 Murray Canyon Drive, formerly the Canyon South Golf Course. Staff reports, please.
This is an application by the Aguacalliente Development Authority for an 11,000 square foot golf clubhouse, 1097 Murray Canyon Drive, basically where the Canyon South Golf Course is. Here's the site plan here. Essentially, it's a demolition of the existing clubhouse and then a rebuild of this new one. You can see it covers approximately the same footprint here. With regards to the height of the golf course, oh, I'm sorry, of the clubhouse, staff decided to take essentially the height from the average between the top of curb and the top of the dike in order to determine what the height of the clubhouse is. Using that method, it does meet the height requirements in the R2 zone, which is what the property is owned, which is about 24 feet. It sort of exists on two levels. The entry point is at the ground level here, and you can see on this elevation on Murray Canyon Drive. That's intended to be sort of a ceremonial entry. It's expected that the way that the clubhouse will end up functioning is that most people would park in the parking stalls in and around and then probably just walk right up the dike. The second level on the floor plan, which is here, you have the ground floor plan and the dike level floor plan. The ground level, you have sort of cart barn storage. The entry, the top level is intended to take advantage of the views southwards towards the golf course where you have a restaurant as well. This went to design review twice. They had a couple of comments with regards to the architecture primarily. If you can see from this ground level plan here, they recommended that the port de cachet, which was originally proposed as wood, to change that to steel so that weather's better in the desert, and to widen this to be at least one car length wide. Secondly, they recommended that the roof line here be extended further this way so it's sort of proportional to what's to the extension on the golf course side. Those were the main comments. There was a minor comment with regards to these windows. The design team has addressed all of these changes, and design review was comfortable with the changes when it went this past Monday. The landscape plan was again reviewed. This is a preliminary conceptual plan. The final plan still has to go back before the design review board as it's shown in the motion for review. One of the two areas where the Commission would be looking at relief is primarily, the code requires that parking be at least 10 feet from the property line of butting the street. In this case, the site is quite tight because it backs right up onto the dike, and the code does allow the Commission to approve alternative design standards, and certainly staff is comfortable with that. One other design issue is that every 10 spaces, there should be an island planter, and that is something that needs to be addressed in the final landscape plan to be reviewed prior to issuance of building permits. There was one condition of approval that we understand there is some concern about. Staff required that a five-foot-wide sidewalk and equestrian trail be constructed along the entire frontage of Murray Canyon with a bikeway in front of the curb along the frontage of Murray Canyon, really as an aesthetic element. We feel it'd be a nice amenity to the clubhouse and to the golf course and to any future development to be able to walk along all of Murray Canyon Drive. That equestrian trail was approved, you can see in this section, as part of the golf course back in December, an eight-foot-wide equestrian trail. That concludes my presentation. I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Jim. Yes, Mr. Evans?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We would recommend that we add one condition that reads basically, prior to issuance of the building permit, that any required clearances from Riverside County Flood Control be secured by the applicant. This is right on the edge of an easement, but when they pull the old building away, they'll have the existing dike there without the support retaining component of the building, and we want to make sure that there's not an effect on that dike since it is required to protect the area from flooding. They're already in reviews with RCFC, and this should be a lot easier than the hydrology reviews.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions of staff before we invite Representative of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to abstain on this item, the proximity of my residence.
Very good. And I think you have to leave the room under our new rules. Thank you, Chairman. I understand there's Representative of the applicant in the audience. Would you like to come forward and address this? Anybody else that would like to speak on this matter as well?
Mr. Chairman, good afternoon. My name is Nicole Chris. I'm with Terra Nova Planning, and we represent ACDA on this matter. I also expect the architect and the project proponent here. I unfortunately inaccurately told them that the hearings didn't start till 2:00, based on our golf course hearing, and so they should be here momentarily. I have prepared, if the secretary could hand these out, some written requests to changes for conditions of approval. The overall project, as you know from the golf course approval back in December, is a continuing effort to improve an old existing facility, the Canyon South Golf Course. The architect team has worked very hard to come up with a design that fits that area and reflects the style that Palm Springs has become quite well-known for, and I think we've achieved that in our design. There are a couple of the conditions that I'd like to briefly go over with you if I could. Condition number 15 in the general condition relates to downspouts not being exposed, and I have had conversations with Jing regarding a downspout that is proposed to be exposed as an architectural detail on the property. She included condition number 46, which allows the exposed downspout with approval of the planning department, and so we would ask that condition 15 be deleted. On condition number 22 relates to outside amplified noises, and as you may know, if you golf, a paging system is generally used at a golf course to call people to their start times, and so we would ask that the outside paging be deleted. We don't have a problem with not putting up any sirens or signalization devices, but the paging system is a necessary item for golf course operation. On conditions 26 and 27 relate to the inclusion of islands in the parking lot. As Jing pointed out, the site is very tight. There is not a lot of space in the parking lot. If you've driven by there, you can see now that it's a very narrow site. We would propose to include and meet the requirements of the city zoning ordinance relating to shading, but we would like a little bit of flexibility with that using tree wells rather than islands to provide the projection for the trees and still achieve the requirements for shading of the parking lot, because otherwise we lose potentially up to 13 parking spaces, and the site is already very tight in terms of parking. Condition number 48 relates to the equestrian trail on the property. The condition requires that we install a trail on Murray Canyon Drive behind the sidewalk. We would propose, based on conversations that Mr. Rosar has had with the desert riders, that desert riders would prefer to see the trail occur in a more horse-friendly environment, preferably on the other side of the dike. And as those discussions are ongoing, we would ask that the condition be modified so that the location of the trail could be determined in agreement with desert riders prior to the issuance of building permits, so that we could come to an agreement that would be acceptable to the city prior to the issuance of building permits for this building to address the trail issue. As you may recall, with the golf course approval, we are required to provide access to the wash side at the east end of the golf course, and ideally, desert riders, I think, based on Mr. Rosar's relating of his conversation to me, desert riders would prefer to ride up the wash or up the golf course, and we'd like to be able to work out that kind of arrangement before we settle on a equestrian trail right next to the traffic lanes. Condition number 49 relates to the construction of a sidewalk along the entire front from Toledo to the Old Canyon South property, I'm sorry, the Old Canyon Hotel property. We would ask that that, we don't have any problem with providing a sidewalk along the frontage of the clubhouse, but if that condition could be modified to limit it to that, the golf course plans do include the sidewalk, as does the specific plan which is coming up quickly behind. Condition number 50 is a reiteration of 48 and 49, and if you are agreeable to the modifications that we are proposing on 48 and 49, we request that that condition be deleted. And finally, engineering condition number four, which contradicts condition number 47, if that could also be deleted, please. And that concludes my comments. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the representative while she's at the podium? Thanks, there may be some later. Doug, I wonder if you could maybe start by just giving staff's position on these objections or requests for changes, rather?
Mr. Chairman, just give me one second to just get everything noted correctly. Mr. Chairman, with regards to the conditions of approval, let me just try to take them in the order that they were brought up. There's a couple that reference back and forth, so I might go back and forth a little bit. Try not to. With regards to condition number 15, subsequent to the preparation of the conditions of approval, we reviewed the downspout with design review. It is integrated into an element of the architectural design, and if you'd like, we can point it out. It just happens to be right behind on the top two elevations, the palm tree. You'll see it just basically coming down. It will look okay, and so we concur with that one. Number 22, we agree with that change with regards to the starter. It usually helps at a golf course, so we would agree with that change. Number 26, the Commission has the authority to not require those landscape islands. This is an existing facility. I tend to agree that we'd probably in the long run be better served by having the parking spaces, and we're going to take a look at a final landscape plan, and we'll just, if the Commission's pleasure is to delete those islands, what we will do is make sure that they meet the 50%. Regards to, I'm going to start with planning condition 47. That has a linkage back to number four. It's actually the last comment in the comment page, but I'll just try to keep them in order as we flip through. Engineering recommended that we have a 12-foot combination sidewalk bicycle path along Murray Canyon. Planning suggested that we put it in the street as a Class II, and let me kind of explain the current situation, and it's really going to be a Commission call. And I'm going to talk about bikeway, sidewalk, and equestrian trail. Currently, we have an equestrian trail. The approved golf course plan, I think Jing pointed out, we have an approved equestrian trail. The city's position has always been, if a developer in the equestrian community and the city concur on relocation of equestrian facilities and proper easements, you know, are provided, as long as we get from the required Point A to the required Point B, if they put that adjacent to Murray Canyon or inboard on the golf course side, it doesn't bother us. And we've done that at the Tocwoods Creek Golf Course. We've done it at Mesquite Country Club, and we've done it at multiple smaller projects about town. So from the equestrian trail standpoint, if they would like to move that, we would be amenable to that, but provided we actually have an easement at the end of the day and it doesn't get left out because they run out of room. Or they landscape and do the improvements on Murray Canyon, and then they run out of room on the golf course later on and say, well, it just doesn't fit, or the golf course operator doesn't think it's safe. We went through all of that with Mesquite Country Club, and we've got an equestrian trail that runs right up the middle of it, right by the driving range. We've never had a problem. Generally, this is a group ride trail or a very infrequently used trail, and if 20 or 30 horses go by, I guarantee you, you're going to stop your golf play, because cowboys always, always have horses that can chase you down if you give them a whack. So from the standpoint of the equestrian trail, if they want to move it inboard on the golf course, we're okay with that. From the standpoint of the sidewalk, planning staff's thought was, you know, if we have a hotel and we have a new clubhouse facility, should there be a pedestrian path between the two? You know, it's a long run or a long walk, but traditionally, we try to get sidewalks where people walk. Historically, if you're familiar with this neighborhood, people walk adjacent to the curb. You know, they walk in the street, and they've been doing it for, you know, 30, 40 years. So it's really, the Commission has the authority to not require it. You know, in a new developed area, sidewalk adjacent to a project linking to onsite amenities, pretty common. At the hotel site, the sidewalk exists. I'm not sure putting a sidewalk just adjacent to the golf clubhouse, you know, is worthwhile. So my suggestion on the sidewalk is you either require it, and if it's a hardship financially, you know, maybe it's something the agency can help participate with, or you not require it at all. But I don't think you need to just put it in front of the clubhouse. Golfers are going to walk wherever they want anyway, so having a sidewalk there isn't really that necessary. With regards to the bikeway, the engineering recommendation was to try to combine the sidewalk and bikeway. When planning staff looked at it, there's not enough room to have a combination sidewalk, bikeway, and equestrian trail, and we suggested we kind of split the difference. The bikeway could be in the street. Did Marcus come in?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd like Marcus to address, if we put the bikeway in the street, is there a way to do it without red curbing the parking lane?
No, there's not. There's 32 feet on each side of the street. It's a secondary thoroughfare, so you basically have two 12-foot travel lanes and an eight-foot parking lane. And so if you were to put a bike lane, now, I have to go back. The reason that this condition, engineering condition four was suggested, was because the general plan shows a bike path on that side of Murray Canyon. So as with normal engineering conditions, we always throw out the ones that we try to be consistent with the general plan, and then it's up to planning commission or city council to amend or modify that condition. But unfortunately, you can't fit a striped bike lane in the street without taking away parking, so it would be either you don't require or provide for a bike path along Murray Canyon, and it's just an unstriped Class III, you know, bike, it's not even a bike lane, it's just like it is now. But you wouldn't be able to have a striped bike lane in the street without deleting the parking there.
All right. Thank you, Marcus.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to go through the rest?
Yeah. Why don't we finish your comments here?
Okay. So the Commission has a range of options relative to sidewalk, bikeway, and equestrian trail. The trail, I think, is pretty simple to deal with. It's either adjacent to the dike, on the north side of the dike, or they move it to an alternative location, and you can be really creative on golf courses with equestrian trails, and we've had good success with that. The sidewalk, Commission call. The bikeway, a Commission call, and I think the applicant's position that it's existed out here for an awfully long time is one that you might want to consider, although you'd give up an amenity. I do have to tell you, on the sidewalk and bikeway and the approval of the planned development district for the Canyon Park Resort and Spa 94, it was not required. In the approval of the golf course this year, it was not required. All we required was the equestrian trail. And it was probably, in looking through a document that thick and a file about like that, I think planning and engineering staff overlooked it when we looked at the golf course, or we would have brought this to you in the golf course review. That's the challenge of specific plans with lots of text. With regards to the next conditions, number four on engineering, that one we've already addressed, and I think that covers all of them. Mr. Chairman?
Very good. Thank you. I understand we may have some later rivals, representatives of the applicant. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, back to Commission then for comments, questions? Mr. Schomberger?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Jing, I had not seen this plan before, and I'm looking at this plan, and am I correct that Murray Canyon Drive runs here, this way, and this is like a port de cachet to get into the golf course?
That's correct, yes.
And the front entrance would be there and represented in this drawing here, correct?
That's right.
And so what they've done, if I'm looking at this thing correctly, is the way it is now, this is a large grassy bermed area that runs down to the street, and they've taken that berm out and replaced it with this port de cachet arrangement?
Yes, actually, yeah, if you're comparing it to existing conditions.
Yes, right. I'm just trying to visualize what we have here, what we have, what the new design looks like compared to what's there now. And I still don't understand, I think I understand that now. We'd have Murray Canyon here. I'm not sure why, and maybe somebody from the applicant can explain why they even have this, because that front part of the clubhouse has never been used as an entrance. Everybody comes in by way of the parking lot, so I'm not sure. Maybe somebody from the architect can explain what use they expect to make of this front entrance feature. And then also, I can't quite understand what we're looking at here on the front facade. Maybe you can help me understand what that is. This part here that is in the gray tone.
Well, okay, let me just explain the difference between this plan and what's existing. Right now, this parking lot here does not exist. This, obviously in front, does not exist right now. This is all going to be taken away. This parking lot here does exist, so you're correct. I think I passed out some photos that, I don't know where they are right now, but I think that may be something that the architect could answer as to the rationale for that particular entrance feature. With regards to your question about what this is, it's called out here as board form, stained concrete. Again, the material is somewhere over there, and I think, did you have a specific question about what, or is it?
I guess the question is, is this a wall that runs along the front of the clubhouse, or is this stained concrete part of the building itself? I mean, is it recessed out here in a wall, or is it back up against, is it a feature of the building?
This comes out. This feature here comes, it juts out here, and the staircase itself, if I can show it. It actually wraps around and goes up, so this wall, this wall here actually is pushed up. Yeah, right.
Very good questions. In fact, we reviewed a lot of these.
Excuse me, you're the project architect?
Yes.
I wonder if you'd give us your name, please, for the record, and proceed.
Sure. My name is Tom Eto with Gensler.
Very good. Thank you.
And part of the rationale for doing a port de cachet, and this came up, was because this clubhouse is really going to be in concert with future development with the hotel, and that there was going to be a lot of kind of cross-play between some of the visiting guests at the hotel, and they'd actually be shuttled to the clubhouse. So much different than how it's being used now, we wanted to make sure that there was an inviting entrance to the clubhouse, so we wanted to have a feature that kind of drove that out, and the notion of a port de cachet, if I pronounced this right, seemed a nice way to have an inviting entry as you're driving up to the clubhouse in a shuttle. So that was one rationale, to give some identity, some nice entry, an arrival sequence to a clubhouse in adjacent to an upscale facility. So that's in response to that.
Is there any other questions, Sean?
I think I understand better now.
Okay.
While you're discussing that issue, the architectural review had recommended widening the port de cachet, and that's in our motion's agenda. You have no problem with the suggested modifications?
Not at all. In fact, we've taken that into consideration, and we're going to, we actually have revised that in response to that meeting.
Any other questions of the project architect while he's here? Thanks very much for your comment.
Mr. Chairman, the...
Yes, Mr. Matthews.
The, I'm comfortable with the architecture. I think it's fine, and I'm comfortable with most of the changes. The one thing I'd like to discuss, and I have no problem with taking advantage of as much parking lot by eliminating the islands if we can, as long as we work to try and keep the shade coverage in there, whether that be at the edges. But the area between the parking lot and Murray Canyon is pretty narrow, and to get the things in there, we want, and I bike in this area, and we're putting a lot of houses farther down in the south end of town, and, you know, for health reasons and for community reasons, whatever, we really want people to bike and walk. Now, I don't care if that bike and walking path, there's, you know, people, some people walk to get somewhere. Probably not the people in this neighborhood. They want to go somewhere, they get in their car, so they're walking for exercise and recreation. And then the same's probably true with bikers, and it sounds like you've got a solution for the equestrian thing. I mean, it wouldn't trouble me if the bike path in the sidewalk were even on top of the, if the county would let you put it up on top of the dike. Now, it'd be a little dangerous for people, especially on that first tee. I've gunned a couple over there.
I don't think you want to do that.
But somehow, I'd really...
But somehow, I'd really like to see it incorporate. I know for thirty years, it's never been a problem, and it isn't. But, boy, there's going to be a lot of houses going down there. And I really don't want to hold it up here. But if that could get worked out somehow to provide a bike and, you know, whether it be a common, however it makes the most sense. Because you're going to certainly have people coming from the hotel project to the golf course. Or if you finish early and your group's not done and you want to leave, you're going to walk back to the hotel. And then there's going to be a lot of houses in South Palm Springs, and those are people that we want riding bikes and exercising. So that's the one issue I don't know how to handle and I'd like to get resolved.
You know, if you take a look at a compromised position, true bike riders do not like bike paths. They're going to be in the street, you know, they're grinders, so they want to get out and move.
But guys like me aren't wearing those suits and stuff. That, yeah, no. We're just pedaling around and calling it cardiovascular exercise.
We're going to need to widen out so you can get all three wheels on your car.
You asked for that.
Pretty good chair. Anyway, maybe you're right. Maybe you're right. But that's just the one issue.
The, you know, so from the biker, bike standpoint, if, you know, the street is wide and it's never going to carry the amount of traffic that you typically design as secondary thoroughfare. You know, if we were to go back and look at quantities of traffic, and I haven't, you know, it's probably, in peak season, it's a busy two-lane roadway. And it, by being four lanes, it probably just makes people drive too quick. So the bikeway, there certainly should be adequate comfort for people to ride in the street. A five-foot sidewalk would allow people to move about in that neighborhood. And if I were looking at a hotel and I were looking at all the amenities around a hotel, I'd look at as many walking paths that I could put on a little map at the hotel desk and say, here's a one-mile hike or walk, hike. You know, here's a two-mile rough hike and walk. You know, here's how you get down to the stables and then into the wash, and you come back up at a canto, and you've got a loop there that's part sidewalk and part other. What you might want to do is, if they relocate the equestrian trail, there's certainly plenty of room to put a sidewalk in, you know, and make it nice and even meander it. But if you'd like us to work with the applicant, you know, we certainly could do that. But today's the time to impose a condition. You know, the approval of this building is final, you know, with the planning commission. So it doesn't have to go up to council unless it's on appeal. And, you know, if it's a significant problem, you know, this isn't a redevelopment project area. We might be able to talk to the agency about, you know, participating in that. But, you know, if we don't get some type of walking facility in, in the long run, somebody's going to keep asking the question, how come?
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Scholmer?
I have no problem with relocating the equestrian trail and to leave that up to staff to find a solution there that the desert riders and the equestrian people are okay with and otherwise works. And I... If putting in a bike, a striped bike path means that we would lose all the parking on the south side of Murray Canyon, yeah, the south side, then, pardon me, I would not be particularly in favor of that because there are occasions when the golf course needs that street parking and is convenient to the golfers. It's not all the time, though, so that most of the time, there's no cars parked on that side. And if bike riders want to ride their bikes there, I don't think that a striped lane makes it that much, makes that much difference for the bikers, except for possibly one of our commission members. So that I would not be particularly concerned about not having a bike path there. I think bikers will still have, be able to ride there, and the bike path doesn't really add much to their use. I do, though, think that a sidewalk is a good idea. There's a good sidewalk on the other side of the street, but it ends where the private club begins. So that there, and then it picks up again down a ways. But, and then it, the sidewalk extends then, I think it's an eight-foot wide sidewalk most of the way, up to South Palm Canyon. But if you're walking between the hotel and this golf course, then you'd have to cross the street to use the sidewalk and get back and then cross it again. And so I think a sidewalk would be a good feature here to connect the hotel to the golf course. And particularly if it were an attractive meandering-type sidewalk, which I think there's room for, I think it would be a very nice feature, not only for the hotel and the golfers, but for the people in the neighborhood. So my thought, my thinking would be to let them move the equestrian trail, do away with the idea of a striped bike lane, but put the sidewalk in. And I guess that would involve additional expense. And if that's a serious problem, I would like to hear from the applicant. But since they're going to put, since they were planning to put sidewalk in in front of the golf course anyway, and sidewalk in in front of the hotel anyway, I guess we're talking about the difference between connecting the two. So I'm not sure that there's all that much expense involved. But I think it would be important to have sidewalk on that side of the street, given what we eventually will see on that side of the street and what's going on in the neighborhood.
If I can address that, Dana Fredo, ACG chairman.
Financial hardship was a key word that Doug used. I agree with you. It's probably a good concept. Again, you're talking about a half a mile, five foot wide. The whole block is about a mile long, so I'm just thinking the clubhouse is about a half mile down either way. But we are a redevelopment district. If we can get some help from the redevelopment to help us pour that concrete, well, we have no problem with it.
Yeah, Mr. Evans?
You know, Mr. Chairman, if you want to, if you wanted to, you could require the sidewalk today as a condition of this, but defer the construction of it until the hotel's built. And that way, it's a much different construction project. That would give some time to work out, you know, any details relative to if there's agency participation. You know, and it may be, you know, a year or two before the hotel's built. And that way, it doesn't become part of the golf course budget, as the commission well knows. Development authority got hit real hard by the Sierra Club, and it's cost them a year and a significant expense to redesign the project. So maybe that's an alternative. And when we're looking at a three or four hundred-room hotel, it might be easier to talk about a half-mile of sidewalk. I'd suggest, if you're going to do the sidewalk, we might eventually want to go all the way down to the Smoke Tree Stables so you can move all the way around. And I really think that we'll see lots of hotel guests out there walking. And that's good for hotel business in the long run, to talk about beautiful walks and being able to see, you know, all the things you can see in Palm Springs that you can't see in most other towns.
Ms. Conrad, do you have a comment?
I totally concur about the equestrian trail. I think that, I'm not usually a proponent of sidewalks, but in this case, I think it's either all sidewalk or no sidewalk. And I think we should have all sidewalk. I think that with what's going to happen there in the future, apropos of Mr. Matthews' comments, I think we need the sidewalk. And there will be room if we delete the equestrian trail from on Murray Canyon and put it somewhere else. And it could be, you know, meandering and beautiful, and I think it should be there. And when it gets built, I think we could have a lot of flexibility about. And I agree with the parking lot, but I think because they're not going to have to do islands, I would like to see some embellished landscape. I just don't want a few little trees lining both edges of it. I think that there could be something really creative done that gives us at least fifty percent shade, if not maybe a higher standard than the rest of the city lots. And the last thing I have to say is that I understand the calculation for the height, but it, the architecture, I'm surprised that design review didn't have a little more to say about the monolithic look of that front, of that front facade. And I agree, not everyone will be looking at it from right straight across the street, but that's thirty feet straight up. And it does have the little jog with the entrance. And it only has this few little windows, and it's a lot of, a lot of concrete. And it'll probably be pretty, given the materials. But I think that the landscape plan really needs to address that. I guess all in all, it's not that high from the top of the berm. But I think that some attention on the final landscape plan needs to be paid to how you break up that big mass. That's just essentially one big square with a staircase at the center of it. And I think widening the portico share helps a little bit, but we need, we need a little more embellishment there, too. Otherwise, I don't have a problem.
Very good.
No, you are.
I note that the project landscape architect is in the audience. Would you care to make any comments concerning that last suggestion? Or maybe those issues are something that you've already contemplated?
Ron Gregory, landscape architect. I think with regard to your last concern, that being embellishing or softening the mass of the building there, I believe we can do that. There are planters adjacent to the building, which we can work with, which would help nestle it in a little bit more. I would like to bring up, since I have this opportunity to speak, a little concern about embellishing the parking lot. I'm curious, from the city's perspective, have you had any type, over the years, any type of response to the trees in the leisure services center, where the trees are parked at the, call it the beginnings of the parking stalls as opposed to the ends? Have there been reports of people bumping into those trees? I would think that this is one of the older establishments I'm aware of, with that type of planning.
Yeah, we just recently tore them all out and redid the parking lots because people knocked the trees down.
That's what I was afraid of. And I recently was at the revised Hyatt Hotel in Indian Wells and saw their planting, the same approach. And I was looking at smashed-over trees and they hadn't even opened it yet. So if your request to have embellishment in the parking lot does not... I know you didn't say that, but if you're, okay, great.
I'm not a landscape architect, so I wouldn't even presume to dictate to you how to do it. But I don't have a problem deleting the islands, but then give us something that really does provide the shade. I mean, I know that there are many parking lots in the city that conform to the fifty percent shade ratio, and when you go to park there, it doesn't seem like there's fifty percent shade.
Well, in theory, it's at maturity of the tree.
I understand, but...
Which might never happen.
The, Mr. Chairman, in the motions agenda, we do have a motion that talks about a revised landscape plan. This is a preliminary plan, and I'm confident the design team can work on the landscaping and, you know, soften up the front, get good landscape design as well as shading. And we'll just work with that on the final plans, if that's the commission's pleasure.
Very good.
I had one other question before Mr. Gregory leaves the podium. Maybe you can help me understand how the parking area is screened from the street?
Well, through the use of the landscape parkway, which is, in this case, providing several responses to different situations. For example, that area serves as a lower-story screen to hide parked cars to some degree from the street. It also provides an opportunity to plant trees in pretty heavy profusion, as you can see, to attempt to get close to that fifty percent shading rule. One of my concerns with introducing a meandering pedestrian and bicycle path in there is that it'll make the challenge a little more interesting as far as providing screening of parked cars and an effort at providing close to fifty percent shading. So that parkway area has a lot of work to do.
Is there a wall around the parking?
I don't remember one. No.
So that the only thing that will screen those two parking lots from the street will be trees?
No, not so much trees. Mostly birmingham, boulders, landscaping like shrubs. The trees tend to grow a little higher.
Well, it, for someone driving along Murray Canyon, is that parking lot just going to be, parked cars just obvious open from the street? Or will it be sufficiently screened with birmingham and boulders and whatever else is going to be put in there that it just doesn't look like a parking lot over there?
Well, I think most people will realize that there's a parking lot there, but you won't be looking right into the headlights of parked cars. You probably will see the roofs of many of the cars. Our effort would be to try to achieve an average of thirty-six to maybe forty-two inches in height of combined berm, boulders, or shrubs to reduce the impact of the parked cars.
Well, I certainly would be in favor of trying to get that as high as you can so that... I mean, that's a scenic part of the, that drive there. I mean, it's a key street in town. And I think it would be important to, with some creative landscaping and some mounding and birmingham and boulders or whatever you can, so you're not just driving along there and there's two big parking lots sitting there next to...
Yeah, see, we can, we can achieve what your goal is now. I feel comfortable with that. But when we introduce a meandering five-foot sidewalk, it will become very difficult because we won't be able to get the berm height, consistent berm height in.
The, you know, right there in front of the bill, the parking lot, you know, if you think of how people walk, I'm walking from the hotel if I'm going to the golf course. You know, in front of the parking lot, you almost don't need the sidewalk because you're going to walk into the driveway, and that's what I would do as well. And where your most difficult, where it doesn't have to meander is right in front of there, where you've got very little space. And you may even be able to make it smaller. I'm willing to, you know, be there.
I think that's a good comment. I know we've seen situations where people used colored stone or some other demarcation and actually take the walking area into the parking lot or somehow take it right off the street so you don't lose that little section between the curb and the parking area.
Agreed. That can be done. I just have to comment also that it will be at considerable additional expense to create the type of retaining effort, which you're essentially creating like a little canyon. Mike Pacino did this years ago on East Palm Canyon, on one of the condominium developments on the north side. And he has a canyon look, working with a meandering walk, and he has walls on both sides. And it's very interesting, and he did keep the berm height up there, but there was a lot of wall material used in achieving that.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Evans, thank you, Mr. Gregory. Mr. Evans, do you have a comment on this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, after design review on Monday, we did review the landscape plan with a landscape architect, and we went through the issues relative to parking lot screening. We faxed a note to the project team that talked about in the revised landscape plan, because we agree there needs to be some additional detailing. The code requirement is that you have a forty-eight-inch positive barrier between, you know, as far as screening parking areas from streets. That's either a solid, pretty much a solid berm or a solid wall. In a fifteen-foot plus-or-minus parkway, you're not going to get there with birmingham. I mean, you just won't. So what we did was we noted there might have to be some low-screen walls either to, you know, prop up the berm a little bit, you know, and it's going to take a little bit more creative design. But we agree, you know, that this needs to be worked on a little bit. The city standard, pretty much, when you get into a fifteen-foot planter or if there's a five-foot sidewalk, a ten-foot planter, you're probably going to have to do it with a combination of boulders and walls. And at that point, you get in a little bit more regimented-type situation, but you do get the screening and, you know... But it wasn't our intent to have this, you know, be open and visible.
I, just to make a further comment, I think the screening is important there, not only because of the importance of the street itself, but because that parking lot, and because of the site, the way the site's configured, that parking lot has to come very close to the street. And so it's not like it's a setback parking lot where the screening may not be quite as important. If you have the cars that are parked that close up to the street, I think it increases the importance. I think it, it increases the importance of trying to do some creative screening so that we, we can make the best out of what is admittedly a difficult situation.
I'd just like to comment, I concur with, with John's comment about the, about the striped bikeway. I think that this thing is 64 feet across, and I think that it's been part of the canyon loop for a long time. And I've ridden there, and a lot of people do, and without, without a striped lane, it doesn't seem to be a problem at all. And I'd, I'd hate to have, to have it read, read lines that there's no parking in, in the event that we do need it. Unless there's any other comments, I'd entertain some kind of a motion with...
I'll try it.
Go ahead, Mr. Scholberger.
I would move approval of the application, subject to the conditions proposed by staff, with the exception that we would delete condition number 15. We would delete condition number 22, insofar as it refers to outside paging. We would modify conditions 26 and 27 to eliminate the islands in the parking lot, subject to approval by staff of the final plans and compliance with the 50 percent shading requirement, and also subject to review by staff with respect to the concerns that the, have been mentioned regarding the screening of the parking, and that we modify condition 48 to require a five-foot sidewalk connecting the proposed hotel development to the golf course, but eliminating the requirement for a bicycle path and allowing the Equestrian Trail to be relocated, subject to final approval by staff after consultation with the Equestrian Community and the applicant.
That applies to condition number 49 as well.
And that applies also, yes, to condition 49, and I guess also Engineering Condition 4 can be deleted. And that condition 50, which seems to be a reiteration of conditions 48 and 49, also be deleted.
And to clarify, that is with the elimination of the bicycle path?
Right. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, and I did miss a point, that we also include in the condition with respect to the sidewalk, that the construction of the sidewalk can be deferred until the hotel, until the construction of the hotel.
Motion by Mr. Scholberger, is there a second?
I'll second.
Guys are fighting over it. We've got Mr. Grinch with a second. Any further comment?
We have a question by...
Yes, Mr. Evans.
One, one point of clarification, during the discussion, the sidewalk issue was to go all the way down to the smoke tree stables. The motion said just from the hotel to the golf.
Well, I, I would like it, pardon me, I, I would like, I would like it to go down to, to the smoke tree stables.
You'd have to add that to the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I would add that then to my motion.
In other words, that's the full frontage of the property being developed.
Right. So I'll add that to the motion.
Mr. Grinch?
How much more are we adding, I guess that's the question, to add this additional sidewalk? How much more sidewalk can we talk?
It's probably almost a mile's worth of sidewalk from the hotel down.
Well, on the other hand, if we don't, if we don't get it now, we're not going to get it.
Well, I'll second that motion if Mr. Grinch doesn't object.
Here's a question, I get, because this can always go to counsel down on appeal after you've heard it. So, I'll, I'll, in a second.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just add that I think you can defer it till the construction, also then refer it to the redevelopment agency.
Oh, you can't, you can't, you know, we can say, we'll run it by the agency, it's a separate body, but, yeah.
I suspect the applicant will contact the redevelopment agency.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Does everybody understand? Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Oh, go ahead.
Your landscaping, staff will look at the landscaping in the front of the building. I, I think that that was acceptable to the applicant.
And Mr. Grinch, you had a follow-up question?
Yeah, also, the sidewalk, because you have ADA constraints and other things, is there a possibility, as you go into the design of the sidewalk following a berm? I think I see it on Dyna Shore as you go into Ranch Mirage where it's not a flat sidewalk on grade. They meet the 1 and 12, and it sort of follows, so there, you get some berming, but the sidewalk follows that contour, just a thought.
Well, we'll work with them on a meandering, you know, meandering type sidewalk. You know, they've, they've got a plan already for the parkway to, basically, they could put the sidewalk in where the Equestrian Trail was and not have to make a lot of adjustments to their landscape plan.
All questions satisfied? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries 5-0 with one abstention. Thank you. We look forward to seeing you, of course. All right, it's after 2 o'clock, first public hearing item, case 5.0944, application by Rocco Gambino for conditional use permit to construct a 508-square-foot guest house at 2198 Calle Felicia. Staff report, please. Excuse me, are you Mr. Gambino?
Yes, sir.
I wonder if you just have a seat for a moment? We'll open the public hearings in just a moment after the staff report.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an application for a guest house in excess of 150th of the lot area, located at 2190 Calle Felicia. You might not be familiar where it's located. It's got this little vicinity map here. It's at the corner of Calle Felicia here and Arenas, and it's basically that residential neighborhood just to the west of the Palm Springs Mall, so, and north of Barista Road. So just to get you oriented there. A guest house greater than 150th of the lot area is permitted in the R1C zone, subject to the fact that the lot is greater than 15,000 square feet. And in this case, the lot does meet that requirement at 17,000 square feet. The existing residence, you can see on the site plan here, and I'm also going to pass these photos out, so you can take a look at the front and the rear yard, is 1,800 square feet. The proposed guest house is in this location at 508 square feet. They certainly don't exceed their lot coverage, 35 percent maximum. In the photos, you can see that there, there's an existing six-foot wall here where the proposed guest house would be located. It does comply with all the property development standards of the zone, and it would not exceed 12 feet, I believe is actually probably a little below, about 11 feet 6 inches. As a condition of approval, staff has required that the guest house not be permanently, you know, rented out or used as a rental unit, and that's part of our ordinance, so we've included that as a condition of approval. The applicant just intends to use this as a guest house. Certainly, all the parking, you know, for a guest could be provided in their driveway in this area. Staff recommends approval of this conditional use permit, and I'd be happy to answer any of your questions. Thanks.
Any questions of staff before we invite public comment? Seeing done, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the commission on this matter, please come forward at this time. Please give us your name. Yes, Mr. Gambino, if you, this would be the appropriate time if you'd like to comment on your application.
Well, it's a relatively simple guest home, as Jing pointed out. I'd be most happy to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you. There may be some... Anybody else wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing done, we'll close the public hearing. Back to commission for comments, questions, motions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move approval subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Matthews, second by Mr. Caffrey. Roll call vote, please, Michelle.
Ms. Conrad?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Grinch?
Aye.
Mr. Schonberger?
Aye.
Mr. Caffrey?
Aye.
Mr. Klatchko?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is number three. I'm going to have to abstain on this matter, represent the neighboring property owner, and I will turn the matter over to the vice chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Klatchko. Case number 6.468, application by John Westman for a variance to allow a carport and garage within three feet of an interior side property line of a residence located at 360 Pablo Drive, R1A Zone, Section 15. Staff report, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is an item that we brought to you. We did recommend that we continue the item. The applicant's been working with utility companies to evaluate an easement. They've gotten good word from all but one as of today, so we're not ready to move forward. At this point, the applicant's comfortable with the continuance. This is an item for a public hearing. If there is anybody here that would like to testify, we have to give them the opportunity. And then, at the end of the public hearing, we ask the commission to continue this to your next planning commission meeting.
All right, well, I will open the public hearing. If there's anybody wishing to comment on this item, please come forward. Seeing done, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll go back to the commission for a, we need a motion for continuance?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, you want to keep the, the hearing open?
Oh, keep it open?
Yeah.
Okay. Then we will keep the public hearing open.
And continue.
And continue.
Your motion to do that? Mr. Chairman, I move we continue the public hearing till our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Mr. Matthews, second by Mr. Schonberger. Roll call, please, Michelle.
Ms. Conrad?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Grinch?
Aye.
Mr. Schonberger?
Aye.
Mr. Caffrey?
Aye.
Pardon me.
And someone might step out and let Mr. Klatchko know that it's already over.
Thank you, Mr. Caffrey. We like those speedy public hearings. Next item on the agenda is number six, case 5.0931, application by Century Vintage Homes for Final Plan Development District for the subdivision of 83.83 acres for 308 single-family residential lots on the northeast corner of Gateway Drive and Highway 111. Staff report, please.
Good afternoon, commissioners. We're recommending approval of the Final Plan Development District, subject to kind of a complex motion with a number of parts, so I'm going to kind of walk through it with you briefly and then approach the boards. The first item that we're recommending is, and we wanted to specifically put it into the motion recommending approval on, is that the Final Plan Development District be approved with the ability to provide RV parking in the side yards. Wasn't discussed as part of the preliminary Plan Development District, but it is permissible under the Municipal Code, Section 11.96050, recreational vehicle parking permit. It's permitted in those instances where it's occurring entirely in a side yard, out of the setback area with gates, so that it's essentially screened from view from the public right of way to the best of the ability. Most RVs are taller than six feet, so you will see potentially the top three, four feet on some of the really big units. We anticipate that out of the 308 lots here, you, you might have 50 of them, but it's something that the developer needed the ability to provide as an upgrade or amenity. People also use them for storing of boats and other outdoor vehicles. We were concerned, however, in the placement of a rather large driveway, so a recommendation is to permit it with the use of what they call Hollywood driveway, or kind of the, the two strips that you would see, so that the entire front yard doesn't become concrete. The developer is comfortable with that recommendation, and is going to be providing us additional drawings that show us a typical. We feel comfortable that we can approve that at the staff level, using our RV ordinance. The next item is a trellis detail on the 100 Series homes. This came out of the Design Review Committee, something that we need just a little more work on. We're also comfortable, we can do that at the staff level, based upon the review of the Design Review Committee. On Plan 203, there was a recommendation by the DRC to eliminate the stone on the garage columns. And, I'm sorry, I skipped over Item C here, submitting a furred solar option on the 100 Series homes. What this would do with northern exposure, rear elevation, it would provide for some recessing of the windows. And that's something, a detail that we're going to take a look at, based on the DRC's review. I'll let you kind of look through the rest of the motions agenda while I approach the board. Last item I wanted to call specific attention to was the restoration of the meandering sidewalk and Equestrian Trail on State Highway 111. It was something that was both requested by the Sierra Club in terms of the Equestrian Trail and depicted earlier on the Preliminary Plan Development District. In working with the applicant, they've decided that they can restore the meandering sidewalk, so it's not an imposition or, or something that they're wholly uncomfortable with. I will approach the boards and kind of walk you through some of the brief issues.
If I could just clarify the, the area for a trail. We don't want them to go out and build a formal Equestrian Trail. What we want them to do is set up the landscape plan so that when and if we need to put a trail through there, we can come and basically move the trail through the property without having to tear up irrigation and landscape. It's, it's a long-range idea of having a trail that goes all the way out to Windy Point and beyond. It's a valley-wide effort, and, you know, it may be a long time before we actually need it. Or it could be very, very infrequent when it's actually used, and what we'd probably do is just put Equestrian signs in every 100 feet, and basically just follow the signs like we do through Mesquite Country Club. And as long as the horses aren't, you know, tromping all over the irrigation system, it won't make any difference, you know, how it's really improved.
Okay. Again, two key issues, meandering sidewalk on State Highway 111. Because this is the last development in the area, and because of the excessive speeds on that portion of Highway 111, it's a state highway and people are, are trying to go somewhere, we felt that it's inappropriate, no matter what the width of the sidewalk is, to have it directly adjacent to the curb. It's just not a comfortable place to pedestrian, for pedestrians to be. And as Mr. Evans mentioned, this is going to link up to a regional system. In the not-too-distant future, we wanted to have it pulled back. We've got, there's no shortage of additional right-of-way and setback area that we can meander the sidewalk through. It, it does remain meandering on this side of the entry. As you'll note in the motions agenda, there's a number of conditions relating to planting. In final analysis, the planting here along the highway is just not dense enough in terms of the materials, size, and we'd like to see some additional material in there to provide a nice entry statement, but also to kind of shield and soften the view when you first approach the site. In terms of the RV parking, you'll note on the, the site plan, they're showing kind of these, what they call or refer to as Hollywood drives on all of the units. They're showing that it could be laid out that way, but we don't anticipate them providing it. It would be an upgrade for the, for the applicant, for the, for the applicant's customers. Again, you're seeing kind of these dual, essentially pads for your wheels to go in. And they're, would all occur behind gates. We're, we're comfortable with that. It's, it's a nice upgrade, and people do like to store their vehicles when available at home. Again, there's some typical landscape plans and the details they've worked out at the street ends here and here that'll be replicated on all of the stub streets, so we kind of dress these up. With those few items, we're recommending approval of Final Plan Development District. The applicant's present today and would be more than happy to speak to you, answer any questions you may have.
Very good, thank you, Alex. If the applicant or any other individual would like to address us on this matter, now would be appropriate time to come forward. All right. Back to commission then for questions, comments?
I sat through Design Review, is when this came up, and they're surprisingly quite amenable. And as the changes came up, worked well with the developer, and they blessed it.
Very good.
It's good. It's good.
Mr. Caffrey?
Yes. Doug, on the RV Hollywood drive, is that going to be a more substantial, thicker slab, so it doesn't end up being busted up with these higher GVW RVs that are being sold these days?
Since it's a private amenity, we haven't looked at the detail. We certainly could. If it hits our parking lot design standard of depth, you know, for asphalt concrete, it'll be fine for the RVs for the amount of use.
But you have a lot more stronger driveway when you have a 10-foot wide driveway. If you just have a two-foot strip, it's gonna easily crack unless it's much thicker, so that's my point.
Okay.
Do you want me to respond to that?
Only if you'd like to.
If you'd like.
Sure.
I just wanted to indicate that we'll provide our...
Excuse me, you've been before us before, but what if you just give your name for the record?
Marty Butler with Century Homes, Century Vintage Homes. I just want to indicate to you that we always have these, what we call the Hollywood strips, engineered by our civil engineer, has rebar in it, concrete, and can withhold the largest RV. So we've already gone through an engineering procedure, and we'll provide that information to the city.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Butler.
And then, one more question. On the solar panels, that's a solar electric or solar water heating?
Those are solar collectors.
For water heating or for electricity?
For electricity.
And are these gonna, on the northern homes where it says furred, what exactly does that mean?
What does that refer to? I'm sorry. That's kind of an industry term. What that means is that essentially where you would, underneath the stucco, they'll put foam reveals to provide some kind of depth and dimension to the detail around the windows. They're also talking about thickening the wall so that there's a greater contrast or appearance of kind of an upgrade, recessed windows.
Okay, that's what that is.
It's not solar collectors or panels. It's basically just getting an eyebrow around the windows.
These could be as deep as a foot. They're still, they're still working on the detail, but it's north-facing, so it's not really intended to provide much in the way of shielding or screening of the windows.
Okay, so this is not solar collectors on either B or C?
That is correct.
Correct. Thank you.
Further questions? Mr. Matthews?
I have a question. Maybe the staff come. I think I watched, you know, we kind of punted this the last time at the City Council, and as I recall, there was a pretty good public hearing, good community turnout, and council heard it and voted, and here it is. Were the RVs involved in that presentation with the neighborhoods?
Not part of the original discussion.
The RV issue, we had a, we had a nice discussion about this at staff level. Currently, by right of zone, you know, in our municipal code, you can park an RV on your property in your rear yard. That's something that we permit. If that RV is in a required side yard or rear yard, it requires a permit, to put it. And it's a staff approval permit, and we don't issue very many of them. You know, so it's the type of thing. We, it's allowed everywhere in town, and we didn't want to make it any different here. And what Marty wanted to do as the developer is get a standard plan approved to show how we're gonna do driveways, so that we don't end up with, you know, 12-foot driveways on, you know, all along in the front yards.
Okay.
So it's a good design.
Thank you.
Further comment? We have a motion? Mr. Grinch?
I got it. I got it. Thank you. I move approval of the application, Century Vintage Homes for Final Plan Development District, Plan Development 279.
That's subject to all the...
Subject to all the conditions.
Conditions proposed by staff.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Grinch, second by Mr. Caffrey. Any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Commissioner Matthews brought up the issue of a community meeting and involvement. We'd just like to give the Commission an update. Last night, planning staff, engineering staff, economic redevelopment staff, and the developer met with a small group of homeowners, many of which are the most directly affected by this project, to talk to them about construction schedule, fencing, timing, you know, who to call when the sand blows, because it probably will blow, things of that nature. We had a really good meeting, and I think a lot of good information was shared. And we actually got feedback today that people were really appreciative of sitting down in a small setting and talking about the project. And we appreciate the fact that Marty took the time for another community meeting, and she brought her job superintendent up, so everybody knows who to call.
Very good. Thanks for the update on that. Okay, next item is number seven, case 3.2317, application by Far West Industries for major architectural approval to construct 62 single-family residences on the existing tract 11951 located at Racket Club, Villa Escuela, Hermosa Drive, and Paseo de Anza. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman and respected members of the Commission, before you is a kind of an interesting proposal. The, this was a track map that was approved in 1979, and developers chosen to build upon it, and basically has presented us with a major architectural approval, a right-of-zone, if you may, project. The location is with Ramon, or, excuse me, I think I've got, with Racket Club on the north, Hermosa Drive on the west, Paso de Anza on the east, and Villa Escuela on the south. It's vacant and brush-covered. There's no tree coverage on this lot. The adjacent zoning designations are R1C, 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 and there's a planned development. Every surrounding properties are developed with single-family dwellings. The... I, basically, there's, the Design Review Committee looked at the architectural drawings and chose not to utilize their substituting. There was a restudy this, and I had a, part of it got folded over here. This is, oh, no, no. So you, so you understand, I'm sorry, that that's a little, a little confusing. It wasn't redrawn in entirety. But they proposed that architectural elevations were approved. Once the restudy was accomplished with the contemporary design, they were pleased to see a contemporary or modern architectural style added to the Spanish and Tuscan styles, to give a little bit of diversity to the project. There's one development that I feel that I need to bring up. It was brought to my attention by the developer. It's in your conditions of approval. Planning condition number 23 talks about a reciprocal access agreement, and I'm going to show you how this is adjacent to Racket Club. And you can look up here, and we see there's, there's shared driveways. There, and these, we said, okay, fine, they're gonna have a reciprocal access agreement. The original track map, one of the very few conditions associated with it, showed the side, or lot number one and lot number six accessing off of Hermosa and Paso de Anza, or Paseo de Anza. And we chose to go with the developer's request to please access on Racket Club. Engineering, I had discussed this, and I thought we were on common ground, but, but we weren't. And they have conditioned this in engineering condition number seven, on the, let's see, it'll be on the Racket Club, it'll be, they'll say Racket Club number seven. I'm sorry, these aren't, there's not a page number to refer to. But where they, they were still accessing off of the Hermosa and Paso de Anza. So, and then they shared an access between lots number five and four, and three and two. The developer would prefer to maintain this arrangement. It is, it goes with his architectural design, and, and he's, would like, would like that. I'm leaving it on to you to, for consideration, to see if there's, it's the one item I can say that probably isn't, it is not consistent with the previous track map. The lot sizes are the same.
Mr. Chairman, if I could comment on that?
Sure.
The intent of the original condition was to make sure that we didn't have driveways, independent driveways up near the corners on those end lots. The applicant did come to Development Committee fairly early and show us the plan, and what they're basically proposing is a circular drive-type condition with shared access between the two properties. So, both properties would have the ability to turn and come out straight, and, you know, that's really the intent. The code, as it's written right now, does not prohibit driveway access on thoroughfares. It says you have to have a turnaround. Going back to 1979, there was a condition that basically said, put those driveways on the side streets. The applicant certainly could probably find a building plan and turn the driveway, or the garage, but it certainly would require them to do a redesign of their buildings. Mr. Chairman, I would make a recommendation. I didn't get a chance to look at the landscape plan, and in this area and most of our areas, we try to get the trees at 24-inch box. They're at 15-gallon trees. On a windy day, in this neighborhood, 15-gallon trees are gonna snap over and probably not do very well or grow crooked. So we'd suggest that the front yard trees, and it appears that there would only be a few, no more than two for most lots, those be upgraded 24-inch box trees.
Mr. Evans, could you clarify, is engineering condition number seven inconsistent with planning number 23?
It's inconsistent. If you adopted the second part of number seven, they would have to redesign their driveways on Racket Club as well as the houses.
So, I'm not, I'm not quite following the comments. Are you suggesting we keep number seven in as well as?
Well, engineering would like you to keep number seven in, I believe. Planning staff, after a Development Committee meeting, actually thought that we had resolved that at Development Committee early in the project, and that we were gonna allow them to have the driveways as shown.
Which is what is described in at number 23?
Yes, sir.
So anybody in the audience that wishes to address us on this matter? Yes, sir, please come forward, give us your name.
My name is Kit Kenyon. I'm project manager for Far West Industries. I would like to comment that I noticed that inconsistency in there, and I had thought that had been resolved, frankly. We would prefer to leave the concept as it is for reasons that, yes, it would require changes in the plans. It would require that effectively turning those lots, we would end up, since the, those end lots have a house that's too wide, we'd end up on that street with six houses all of the same plan. We'd also end up with a block wall on each corner that would be seen, rather than what I think is a, this is much more aesthetic than looking at a block wall on each corner as you go down Racket Club. As far as the landscaping is concerned, I'm sure that, I don't think we have any major objection. I'm sure that that can be left open to be worked out with planning. That's about it.
Commissioners, questions, comments? Mr. Caffrey?
I don't have a problem with those driveways being the way they are, except I would have one comment, that it's a large driveway, that maybe a portion of it, maybe the center portion of it be of a stamped style or decorative of some, or colored or something, just to give it a little relief. And also that there would be no parking in that center area, so that it can be used as a turnaround or, you know, something they can back into and leave, so there's not a bunch of cars parked there. I'd hate to see especially like RVs and junk cars and things like that piling up in that area.
With regards to the parking, that would be covered in the reciprocal easement between the two, because it's intended that you can't park in the connecting part that you can actually, you know, drive through. We could, we could look at maybe some refinement, maybe we could narrow it up a little bit.
Comment?
Yes, sir.
That's somewhat deceiving up there. Actually, that is two driveways. But they are recessed so that there is a planting area in between, in back of the 10-foot sidewalk, and where the driveway swings around to become reciprocal, there is planting area. It is not one solid piece of concrete from the street. The actual approaches, I have showed them as, I believe I showed them as a 16-foot approach with the two X's would make it about 24 feet. They, that approach can be narrowed down. You talk about a 10-foot approach, we could make a 10-foot approach. With the two X's, we'd have 18 feet.
I'd be happy with staff to work that out with you.
Thank you.
Further questions, comments?
Mr. Schoenberger? Just, I didn't understand about which of the models, which of the contemporary or modern models, designs are in and which are out.
Yeah. This, this particular, these were restudied. I didn't get a no on this. The applicant did not re, I'm sorry, did not redraw, you know, every, every one with a colored plan. He chose to just restudy the contemporary, and so we can say, no, this is not. Okay, I'm so, I'm so sorry about that. I really felt it was not, you know, to start cutting and pasting was kind of inappropriate, but I should have made that clear. This is a cleaner design, and they were applauded at Design Review for this.
And Design Review was happy with, with all of the architecture?
Yes. They were very comfortable with it. There is a wide array of color schemes and materials that were well-received also, approved as submitted from Design Review.
Mr. Evans, just to clarify, if the Commission is comfortable with the proposal to have the shared driveways, would you suggest that we strike engineering number seven?
No, we'd take out the second sentence and then add lots one and six to the third sentence, and we'll take care of that for the Commission.
Okay. You have a motion then? Mr. Caffrey?
Sure, I'd make a motion to approve, subject to the staff report with the stated deletion of sentence two and the 24-inch box trees.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Caffrey, second by Mr. Matthews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is number eight, case 3.2315, application by Mario Barardi for major architectural approval to construct a warehouse and open equipment yard on property located at 245 Radio Road. Staff report, please.
We're going to start with case number 3.2316. It's, I put an APN map here to try and help orient you. The first case is here on the corner, and Mr., we're gonna talk about this subsequently after we review this. They're, they're going to be built subsequently after we review this, they're, they're, uh, going to be built in a similar style, et cetera. Um, the, the, uh, what, these are, is a warehouse project with four office units in this, in this first warehouse complex of, for a total of 5,657 square feet. And then there's a equipment yard that's proposed for the, uh, back that will be, um, actually accessed via an alley. The, um, this is on the corner of Dell, Soul and Radio Road. The, uh, applicants had, the, the property, the way it lies out here, I don't know if you're familiar with it exactly. It's vacant land here on the north. Over here, you have one, one small, um, development, uh, electric motor service, so an industrial use in a block building. Um, then on the south, there's a, uh, a recycling center here that's separated from the property by the, uh, alley, vacant, um, another proposed warehouse I'll speak of later, vacant warehouse. And then on the corner where you see Indian and, uh, Radio, actually, you're gonna get the, it's Desert Fountain Gas and Supply, so you're getting the idea of where this is. Um, the zoning designations are two, M1, 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 et cetera. So it's, um, basically surrounded on three sides by, uh, uh, industrial property. And the, the, basically when Design Review looked at this, they, uh, approved it, it's in its entirety with the, um, suggestion on, they looked at them together on both of these to upgrade the doors to a commercial door for the man door and for the, um, uh, roll-ups. They weren't quite happy with the quality that was presented and the applicant has concurred with that. So they approved the colors, the landscaping, et cetera. We did look at this and we have, as staff, chosen to, there, there's enough parking, we're going to have another median here, landscape median. We didn't feel that, um, there was enough, uh, shade, that the, that these weren't really going to meet the 30% shade requirement that's required for this particular, uh, zoning designation and use. With that, uh, we, I recommend approval of this project. Um, it's relatively straightforward.
Yeah, I wonder if you'd describe the parking and how the, how the parking area is accessed and exactly where that's located?
Okay. The, the parking is, is, we call it bay parking and it's going to, it's gonna access directly off of the streets. So when, when you come in, you will go over the sidewalk and park. And, and I, in all honesty, I am not familiar with that type of parking in the, but I'm, I'm sure that it's, uh, an, an accepted practice in industrial areas.
Are you making, are you making suggestion, or are staff making suggestion that there be enhanced landscaping in that area?
The only, the only suggestion, we, by code, there has to be one more, um, median of, uh, of, uh, landscaping and it, in, because it's overparked, there was enough, uh, space, it won't impact the parking numbers and, and the developer, uh, is comfortable with that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Uh, Condition Number Twenty-Six, uh, takes care of that issue.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we did meet with the applicant and discuss the requirement to comply with parking and shading requirements and he's familiar with that and sees that it doesn't impact his parking because he is a little bit overparked, so he should be able to take care of that.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Caffrey?
Move approval, subject to the following, uh, the two additional A and B conditions as noted on the, uh, motion agenda.
I'll second.
Who is the second? Mr. Ca, Mr. Grinch?
Which, which case are we approving or are we doing both of them?
No, we're doing them one at a time. We're on, uh, Number Eight, which is, uh, 3.2315.
We're on 1-6, right? We did 1-6 first, didn't we?
I did 1-6 first, my apologies.
That's the one I'm speaking of.
Okay.
But the problem is, we had the Chairman announce 3.2315, so that's the one he, we were, and then you did 1-6, so we gotta get that straightened out.
All right. Can you do an update on one, uh, the adjacent one and then if you'd like to?
Why don't I hold my motion and we'll finish, uh, 1-5?
Yeah, we'll read the other one in and, uh, if you want, you can take one motion for both.
All right. This, uh, this report then, and, uh, will affect, uh, or apply to Case Number 3.216, the application also by Mario Barardi for major architectural approval to construct a warehouse office space and open equip, yard, excuse me, at the, uh, 285 Radio Road address.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I certainly apologize for that. Um, I will proceed with a brief description of 2315. Um, this is a smaller warehouse unit. It, uh, comprises 5,657 square feet, but, uh, only one office space is provided in this with a much more substantial equipment yard. It, um, complies with, uh, parking. It, it too was approved at the Design Review Committee level. Um, within, there was one, um, and it's listed as a condition of approval to center the, um, they, they weren't comfortable with the offset of the center, uh, window element and, and change, and so that, that facade change is noted in the conditions of approval. Um, this is, uh, so basically same bay parking that we discussed for the, um, Case Number So I would recommend approval of 2315 and, uh, 3.2315 and, um, of course, 3.2316. Their staff would recommend approval.
I'd make my motion for both.
Very good. And Mr. Grinch, your motion is for both as well? All right. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. This is as to Case 3.2315 and, uh, 3.216. Is that the correct number? Is it 2316? Yeah.
2316.
2316, very good. Anybody have any objections to moving through with the balance of the agenda as opposed to taking a break?
Go.
All right. Next item, number 10, 5.0938, Plan Development 282, application by Laguna Pacific for a, uh, for LP, for Canyon Vista LP, for Final Plan Development District for the construction of 66 timeshare units located at the northeast corner of Murray Canyon Drive and Sierra Madre. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, as Jane pulls the boards out on this one, this is a project, uh, that you've looked at before as a Plan Development District. It did go up to council, it was approved. Uh, the tribal council did have concerns, they did not recommend, uh, recommend approval of the project. Uh, if the project's gone through its appeal process, uh, there were no appeals, uh, relative to the council's action, even though the tribal council was uncomfortable. Uh, the tribal council in, in the report back to the s, staff was concerned about the streetscape, building design, uh, landscaping and a few other items and the applicant has, uh, really tried to rework some of those items and Jane's gonna show you the project redesign and, uh, this did go through Design Review, they do recommend conditional approval. And with that, Jane will show you the, uh, details.
Okay, thanks, Doug. Um, this is, uh, the project, just to remind you, it's located at the northeast corner of Murray Canyon Drive, Sierra Madre. Um, it's 66 timeshare units, combination of one and two bedrooms. Um, just to go through the changes since the last time you've seen it, um, previously there were the stacked units on top of these carports in this area. That's been changed and they've all been moved back now, so they're all on top of these carports instead, so there's actually no units fronting on Murray Canyon Drive. There was concern expressed, um, you know, with regards to that, about, you know, how that looks, um, on that street frontage. They've also, um, in terms of the wall movement in front, previously it was sort of soldier and it was kind of unclear, they were very conceptual. Um, this went to Design Review on Monday and the architect had a chance to explain that, in fact, they will have movement between these walls, which are four feet, and these walls, which are six feet, so you have that difference in, in depth and actually these elevations do need to be revised to reflect that. These walls actually don't go all the way to the top of the carports as shown, they actually stop here and then the carport support will be behind there. The carports will actually be supported on, on poles instead of on, on, uh, those walls. Um, those are the, the main changes with respect to that. Um, one, one other change was, was also the addition of a perimeter wall, uh, at the rear of the project. There was concern expressed by the Canyon Country Club that, you know, they don't want, um, all the timeshare guests to go onto the golf course, so a five-and-a-half-foot-high, uh, perimeter wall and wrought iron fence. I'll just show you that detail real quick. Um, it's right here, you see that they have a block wall, it's about, uh, two feet high and then about a three-and-a-half-foot-high, um, wrought iron, uh, oh, sorry, steel, steel fence on top, actually just exactly like what the pool fencing, uh, will look like. Um, they're also proposing to use scored, uh, blocks, you can see it drawn on here. Um, again, those, you know, elevations do need to be, uh, revised. However, when Design Review, you know, when the architect had a chance to explain, those, those sort of changes, um, to reflect the Murray Canyon, uh, the changes on the Murray Canyon elevation, they were certainly comfortable, uh, with what they were seeing and did recommend, um, conditional approval. Um, the landscaping was also reviewed, um, and, you know, the, the landscape architect reviewed, was also very comfortable with the landscape that was proposed, um, you know, just some minor changes to sort of reflect details on the sheets versus, um, what's on the site plan and just minor things about labeling streets and things like that. Um, otherwise, uh, staff recommends approval of this Final Plan Development District, be happy to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Ms. Conrad?
Uh, Jane, I seem to remember from the last time, a concern about employee parking and an employee break room or, or something like that, was, did those get addressed?
Those have been, an employee break room has been added and employee parking, as far as I understand, can correct me if I'm wrong, they will be, um, delineated spots for employee parking only. And the number of parking spaces has increased to 120 spaces.
Mr. Schobrger?
Um, Doug, has the tribe now seen, uh, the revised plans?
They have, uh, received the plans, I believe. They've not taken them to the Indian Planning Commission. Uh, the tribe's action on this officially was to recommend that it not be approved and as of today, the, the tribal position is still that, that they didn't like the project design and, uh, we're proceeding with our process. It's my understanding, the applicant is a courtesy, uh, has asked to be on the IPC meeting in early April to update the, uh, the Planning Commission at the tribe.
And was, was the tribe's concern, uh, just they didn't like the, the, uh, the architecture?
I think they had concerns about the, uh, street frontage, the, uh, the landscape design as well as the carports and then the units above the carports, uh, and just how that, that unit, that stacked condition works, so they pushed that back so that no longer exists. Um, they, design team has utilized the same landscape architect, uh, that the tribe did on the golf course across the street to try to make it work a little bit. Uh, we think that landscape's got some areas to be beefed up a little bit, so that's why we recommended that the landscape plan be reviewed a little bit more. And, um, you know, I, I, I still think it's a very sharp, well-designed project. I think it'll have good curb appeal and, um, you know, and looking at the hotel project across the street, which you'll see, uh, uh, next week at your study session, uh, you know, they're, they're distinctly different building designs, but I don't think they're incompatible at all. Um, and I think that once this project's built, it'll be a good addition.
Did the, uh, but the Indians' concerns were with the design, not with the land use?
Yes, the, uh, the tribal council did recommend approval of the change in the general plan to increase the density. Uh, it was really, uh, design and I think compatibility issues, um, relative to the project.
Very good then. Mr. Matthews?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move approval of, uh, Plan Development, uh, 5.0938, PD 282, subject to the two conditions in the staff report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Matthews, second by Mr. Schobrger. Any further comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Good luck, thank you. Next, under miscellaneous, we have Sign Program Application by Ed Bailey for Monument Sign at the Tuscany Plaza, located at 2,500 North Palm Canyon Drive, which was continued from the March 12th meeting. Staff report, please.
Thank you. Uh, the item before you, uh, is an item that you've looked at in the past, you may recall. Originally, uh, this was submitted to the city in February of '02, uh, was denied by staff, uh, for a number of reasons, uh, including the lack of dimensional lettering that was required and also the fact that the sign code, uh, requires that identification signs for commercial centers, uh, under 15 acres, um, without anchor stores of a certain size can only have a center ID. This did not meet the criteria to have, uh, the individual tenants displayed on it. Uh, at your meeting on May 22nd of 2002, the Commission directed staff to allow individual tenant signs and work with the applicant to upgrade the monument sign, um, bringing back the design for review. Uh, in the meantime, the applicant has done a number of things. He's, uh, removed some logos and also gone to a single color, uh, of text with the red text. Uh, staff does still have the concern that this is, uh, an oversized sign, doesn't meet the criteria for the, uh, the allowance of individual tenants' names on the monument sign. Uh, I will approach the boards and show you what's, uh, proposed at this time. The Director may have some additional comments on this item as well.
Thank you, Alex. Please do.
As, as Alex goes up, I'll, you know, Alex gave you the, the cautionary concerns, we're gonna end up with more requests for tenant signs on monument signs and I, I think in the long run, you're gonna be disappointed with the result.
At the, uh, Design Review Committee's meeting in February, uh, the DRC recommended approval of the sign design with either white lettering and red background or all lettering to be read with white background, but we still have the contrast here. The applicant has informed me that they have, uh, agreed with the property owner to use push-through lettering, but we still have kind of a, a sign that doesn't quite work in either direction. It's, we've got a mixture of, uh, a lot of fonts, um, and as well as a lot of font colors. Uh, it still isn't quite a coordinated sign.
Yeah, I mean, we're working real hard at the Ralph's Shopping Center on Sunrise and Ramone and we're, we're asking them for a substantially upgraded sign program and if they find out this one's approved, they're gonna come back and ask us about equity.
Uh, thank you, Doug. Um, a, as an example, the Ralph's Center, the Lundin Center, which you may recall, uh, is under that 15-acre criteria, um, and we have been providing direction that because they don't meet the 15 acres, they're only entitled to a center sign, which would be Sunrise Plaza or Sunrise, Sunrise Ramone Plaza, but, uh, they have been indeed told by staff that, you know, you can't put a, you can't put a Starbucks and a Ralph's and a Savon's logo, so if we were to approve this, it would set a strong precedent citywide that staff's free, you know, in all honesty, uncomfortable providing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Conrad?
I move denial of Sign Program Application by Ed Bailey for the monument signs in the Tuscany Plaza and suggest to them that they re-study with staff, uh, a more cohesive sign. It's not that we're not sympathetic to the, to the plight of the shopping plaza, but this is just too, too many fonts, too many colors, too disjointed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Conrad, second by Mr. Matthews. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address us on this matter? Please come forward at this time, give us your name.
My name is Ed Bailey with Maradon Corporation, representing Holly Hills Development and the new owner, John Kea. Um, as, as was done in the, in the May meeting, we had discussed about bringing in the raised lettering and then the other individual signage, because they were individual logos and things, uh, would make that an impossible, uh, direction to be able to do the raised lettering on that. As from a memorandum in October of 2000 on sign construction guidelines, it does discuss the dimensional lettering for the site, uh, sign itself. does discuss the dimensional lettering for the site sign itself, and then making exceptions for logos and other design features that are being made. The segregation between the maroon color behind the Tuscany Plaza sign makes that the plaza sign itself. Okay, then the individual units, those are individual logos and trademarks. And trying to either, you know, trying to make it like a maroon background on the background of the individuals, then that does conflict with some of the existing trademarks and logos of the particular businesses that are there. As to this not complying or having a problem with the Ralph's situation, this actually falls under the original sign plan that was available for this. But we've been trying to bring it up to date and bringing things forward, and we haven't come up with a new sign plan yet. We're still debating this particular sign. I have had discussions with the new owners to do the raised dimensional lettering and so forth, and we've gotten our bids for that to get that ready to go. All the only thing we're waiting for now on that particular thing is to get to the permit. Again, like I say, I, we feel that it has fallen within the existing sign plan that was approved for that center back in 1981. We've come up with these directions to come up. You have the sign of the plaza itself, which is for the plaza, and then the individual signs that have come out from the setup there.
Thanks for your comments, Mr. Bailey. Alex, did you have a follow-up comment?
Yes, I did. In regard to Mr. Bailey's comments, he is correct in that the original sign, and you may recall it, the Lowman's Plaza sign was approved as part of the original development of the center. There is no problem with the dimensions of the sign as a plaza identification or shopping center identification sign. The problem that we're not able to address or have a response to is a way to get the sign permitted legally with the addition of all the individual tenants on the sign because of the acreage and the size of the site. And again, because it falls in a certain criteria or category based on the limited size or the fact that it's not 15 acres, there is no way that we're able to find to get to an approval of the individual tenants on the sign. I do have, I do have a copy of the original approval of the Lowman's Plaza, and I'm sure you all recall it. It's the octagonal sign, long rectangle, low box, metal frame. It was a fairly attractive sign. It's comprehensive. The design only has one font. There's two colors. It's pretty simple. So in terms of the original design, it was a pretty good design. Here we have a design that's not quite as strong, and there's, in reality, no way to actually permit it. So again, our recommendation is not to approve this sign.
Alex, could you clarify? The first time this came before us, did we approve the concept of individual tenant identification on the sign?
Seems like we did.
In reading the minutes, you did. I've got a note here. You directed them to allow individual tenant signs, work to upgrade the monument sign, and bring back proposed signs for final review with push-through letters. And that was what you were trying to get.
Well, what, and just so I'm getting, so my focus is getting a proper focus on this issue. Because I remember looking at this sign, and I remember we were talking about whether tenants should be on it or not on it. And with some disagreement, I think we said okay to the tenants being on the sign, but to try to redesign it. And, but what you're saying now is that because of the size of the shopping center, by our sign ordinance, we, the sign ordinance would prohibit identifying the tenants on this monument sign?
Your understanding is correct, Commissioner.
Okay. All right. And I guess that wasn't pointed out to us at the time we looked at it before, or it was and we just disregarded it. I'm not sure what happened or why we did that. I'm thinking, though, on a, trying to think citywide here for a moment. And if, for example, at Smoke Tree, there's a sign, there's a monument sign on the corner of Smoke Tree that says Smoke Tree. And I'm just thinking to myself, if there were, if that sign included a whole raft of tenants, it would look very good. Is that the issue that we're concerned about here?
You know, the issue is, when you get into, and we'll use the Palm Springs Mall as an example, because it's one that, you know, we all look at. They came through and did a monumentation sign program that keyed the shopping center with a very strong sign, and then they did anchor tenants. Well, community shopping centers and shopping centers of that size, we have a provision that allows that to occur. When you get into shopping centers this size, it, the sign ordinance basically says you can identify the center, but not load up tenants, you know, on that particular sign. The reason this came to you the last time is the staff denied the sign, you know. And the way the process works, if staff denies something, we don't require that they file an appeal and all that. We just put it on your next agenda. And you looked at it, and according to Alex's review, I don't remember the exact discussion, that you did give them encouragement to come back with something. I made strong remarks from staff's perspective. I just think this one's going to be hard to justify, you know, particularly because we've been trying so hard with the new Ralph's to try to keep the project identification signed to identify the shopping center as opposed to every tenant in that shopping center.
Well, I understand the problem. Do we have, on the other hand, I am sympathetic to the owner of this property, because it's been a tough property. I think we'd all like to see that property succeed. Aside from Ralph's, I'm trying to think of other instances where setting this precedent would be a problem and recognizing that Ralph's is a problem. But do we, would we have it in other shopping centers?
You'd have it across the street. You'd have it at the Sun Center, and we're currently going through this with the Sun Center right now. They're going to probably bring a sign up that staff won't approve because of how they're trying to get project identification weaved into tenant signs. And, you know, there's probably a few other small ones in town that, you know, and we may have them in the future. The idea is, when you get into a fairly small shopping center, that one, in most cases, you can usually see the key tenants. This one's maybe a little bit unusual. So if you wanted to say there's something unique here to give you an opportunity to do something with this one, you know, it is set a little bit below grade. The design of it, they did put tenant spaces in buildings out in front where they blocked the views in. That was self-designed, but it is a little bit hard to see some of the signs. But typically, when we get into, you know, a shopping center where you're going to have a shopping center ID sign and then anchor tenants, you truly have anchor tenants.
Right.
And, you know, the commission's been a little bit flexible on, you know, the Stater Brothers Shopping Center with, until they have more anchor tenants, you did say that some of the inline tenants could get a logo up, but eventually those logos would have to come down. You did that with Dairy Queen.
Alex, did you also have a comment?
Three key points. Assistant Planner Sky Warden advised the commission at the time that, of the same issue that I did, that it just doesn't comply with the codes that we currently have for sign ordinances. The director at the time made the comment that it would have been useful for the applicant to actually work with staff prior to installation of the sign, and there is a notice of violation on the sign because it was installed without permits.
I'd just like to comment. I'm supportive of this motion. I am somewhat troubled by the fact that we gave encouragement to the tenant to have individual signs, and if we back off from that or change it, it's somewhat inconsistent. But my understanding of the original conceptual approval is that the quality of the sign would be there. And if individual tenant identification cannot be done and maintain the quality of the sign aesthetically, architecturally, then I don't think it would be inconsistent for us to deny it ultimately. And the current presentation to us is just not up to standards. The applicant indicated that the two colors, the reddish color background and the whitish color background is to have two separate, really two separate concepts, one to identify the center and one to identify the tenants. To me, it makes it two separate signs, two separate small signs, and I concur with the staff and the architectural evaluation that that's really not appropriate or up to our appropriate standards. So I would be supportive of the motion.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, just looking at the minutes, it appears the chairman was fairly direct in his comments, asked the applicant if he would like a decision or if he'd like to work with staff for improvements to the sign. And I think if we would have gone back and listened to the actual tape, we probably would have found out the commission, that's a pretty strong statement. When the chairman normally says, do you want a decision or do you want a continuance, it usually means it's an adverse decision.
Well, the one comment I would have is to, so that the applicant, I think we ought to tell the applicant that if it's the, if it's the decision of the commission, that the reason we're denying the sign or the application is because we don't, we don't approve of the idea of having tenants identified on the monument sign. Otherwise, the poor man may go back and try to redesign this thing and bring it back again. And if, so if that's the reason we're denying it, let's let the applicant know so he doesn't go back thinking, well, if I reconfigure this thing, maybe I'll get it approved, as happened before. So I think we ought to, as a commission, make a decision. Either we're going to stand by the ordinance and enforce it, or we're not, so that this applicant knows what to do when he leaves here today.
Would you like to propose an amendment to the current resolution?
Well, I guess I'll make a motion to...
We already have a motion.
No, you can make an amendment. You can propose an amendment.
What's the motion?
Deny it.
Deny it. I'll second it.
Okay.
Strictly was to know how. I would like to add just a couple of things, because one is, the, generally, I'm in favor of trying to make these things work out as best you can, but you really have to go, and I know this is a troubled center, and I'd love to help it as much as I can, and I frankly frequent the places there. But this is really not much of a sign, and that's the problem I have. And that's why I think I was probably on the side of, let's send it back and work with the staff to work something out. And it sounds like that didn't happen. Now, if we deny it, the applicant has the option to go to the city council and take it up there. And they may reverse it. But my thoughts, thinking back to March, were go work with the staff, try and come up with something that we can make work here, and maybe it involved the whole center or whatever. But apparently, that didn't happen. So I think it's, that's why I seconded the motion to deny it.
Any further comment then? We have a motion for denial by Ms. Conrad, second by Mr. Matthews. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Number 12, commission work programs. Mr. Evans?
Mr. Chairman, some brief updates relative to the general plan. The city council last week received and filed a report from the planning commission regarding the public participation process. They basically went with the committee recommendations that you did. We're in the process of getting that committee established, so that's our first step there. The next step on the general plan is the graphic information system, better known as GIS. We are about ready to sign the contract with the consultant to basically help us prepare the general plan map on computer, the zoning map on computer. And in doing that, we'll also be able to probably load up and run most of our land management system, which means we can probably do land use maps and a whole bunch of other things. We've got a very extensive data file, but no way to map it. We're a bit behind the times there. So we're very hopeful we get that contract signed, and that way we don't have to hand draw general plan and zoning maps anymore. We're, technology's moved past that. From the standpoint of what we'd like the commissioners to keep thinking about is, if each individual commissioner would like to take a look at, you know, areas of the general plan that you might have specific interest, whether it's downtown, parks and recreation, open space, conservation, you know, the general plan's broken down into fairly broad chapters. If individual commissioners want to focus in, you certainly may be able to do that, and then we can try to keep you queued in on when we have particular meetings. So that's where we're at right now. We're gathering information. I spent last week at a conference in San Diego, the League of California Cities Conference, and I went to every workshop I could about visioning, general plan, strategic planning. And it was interesting to see what some of the other communities are doing, and spent an hour listening to a futurist talk about long, long-range planning for communities. And, you know, it's an interesting task to try to get people to look past the decision-making process, you know, in the next two to four years when you really start talking about general plans. So we're going to start the community groups. We're working with Lee Husfeldt and Public Information. We're going to do some neighborhood meetings, just go out, introduce the general plan to people, get a sense of interest. So we've got a number of meetings to get rolling there. With regards to work program, you adopted that at your last meeting. We made the changes that you recommended, and that was submitted to the city council. And we'll segue right into the next council cabinet meeting, which is April 8. That's not a Wednesday night. I think they shifted that. So we'll brief the council or the commission on that at your study session next week. Section 14, master plan. We've talked to the tribal staff about a joint meeting with the tribal planning commission. The date we're looking at right now is April 16, and we're trying to get confirmation, and we'll need to know if the planning commissioners that can participate in this one, as you recall, we need all four of you to attend all of the meetings. So trying to juggle the two schedules, so we need to hear back from you fairly quickly that the 16th would work. That completes our update on the work program. Mr. Chairman?
Very good. Considering that April 16th meeting, would that be an afternoon meeting or an evening meeting?
Really would be up to the two commissions. If it's a focused meeting, we could either do it late in the afternoon, you know, maybe at four o'clock in the afternoon. If you'd like to do an evening meeting, we could do it. We'd suggest if you do an evening meeting, just push it to the end of the work day as opposed to sending people home, bringing them back for a meeting after dinner. If you're comfortable, we could do a lunch meeting. I mean, it's really your pleasure, and we have to work that out with the Indian Planning Commission. They only have five members, so they don't have a lot of people that they have to pull in. But I think you, I think it'd be fun to sit down with the two planning commissions. Got some dynamic people on the Indian Planning Commission and people that have been involved in the community and other communities as well.
I don't know, commissioners, are we have them available?
Is that Wednesday?
It's a Wednesday.
Which of the four?
Tuesday.
Can you remind which of us are the four? I know I'm one of them, but I think Ms. Conrad's one of them, and Mr. Caffrey.
It's a Wednesday?
Mr. Grinch? No?
We were thinking of Council Cabinet.
So the, Diane Marantz is the fourth one?
No.
No?
It's John.
John is, okay. Sixteenth works with my calendar.
Is it a Wednesday?
The 16th of, uh...
April.
April.
I don't have my calendar.
Okay. If you could give us a call.
It is a Wednesday?
Yes.
I mean, I'm sorry, I was reading something else. Are you proposing that, and should I check the calendar and get back?
If you could check the calendar and get back to us. The tribal staff is doing the same thing with the IPC and...
And the time would be?
I would vote for lunch personally.
Yeah, lunch or late afternoon. The only reason I asked about evenings, I wasn't sure how the Indian Planning Commission normally functions, but...
They normally meet at four in the afternoon.
Sure. That works for me, or lunchtime.
We don't get much done during the fall chop.
Well, I'm just saying, I'd rather do it in the daytime than the evening personally.
Lunch or 4:00 PM, and if we do a 4:00 PM, we should be done by five, just a few minutes after five. I think we're...
after five. I think we're really focused on a few issues.
Very good.
Doug, will we have an opportunity before that meeting to meet again as a group ourselves to try to plan our comments for that meeting, which I think might be a good idea? And either maybe meet earlier that day, or at some time before we sit down with the Indian Planning Commission to talk about what we're going to do, rather than just go there and, you know, not have our comments focused?
We certainly could do that. We could either do it if you can all attend next week's study session. We could add it. We'd do it the end of the meeting because we have a long agenda, or we could put it, you know, towards the end of your next planning commission meeting, maybe adjourn to a little workshop if that works. But it would be a good idea. We're going to do a little outline based upon your last comments, so we'd outline what we heard the commission wanted to talk to the IPC about.
Well, maybe what we can do is put this on the study session next week as an item, and then we can, we'll be there, and we can talk at the end of the study session. If we want to stay and discuss this, we'll have an opportunity to do it, because I think we ought to at least get some of our signals straight. I take it that would be our only opportunity to meet with the tribal planning commission. That would be the meeting.
That, right now, is the meeting date that we're trying to get both groups.
Right, but there would not be another meeting.
Unless you needed another meeting, there would not be one.
So if we have some things we want to say to that planning commission, we probably ought to get them ready and say them at that meeting.
You bet.
I think that's a good suggestion, and your suggestion of giving us an outline of what we said last time may help focus our thoughts, where so that our comments at the study session won't be too lengthy, I think.
And so could we have the outline for next meeting, Ben?
We will do our best to get it done. We've got a very, very lengthy study session next week, and we're, this will be about the 11th or 12th item. So please, please come on time and...
I won't be present at the next meeting. I'm going to be out of town.
Second?
Yes, that's my anniversary.
Okay, we take one item off that one. We'll try to do it after your next regular meeting, and we will have the outline by then.
All right. Next item in the city council actions update?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the city council tonight has an adjourned meeting. Got a few items on their calendar. One is a review of the White Party and suspending regulatory ordinances. The principal one is the noise ordinance. Due to the length of the events, they're going to talk about some of the convention center items underway, the airport terminal access roadway, and some of the airport security issues. The council will also, that's an adjourned meeting, they have a regular study session also tonight. They're going to talk about the desert fashion plaza streetscape plan. As you recall, we brought that to the commission about a year ago, basically redoing the street along Palm Canyon and wrapping it around on Detokwitz, try to pick up 38 on-street parking spaces and really make it look like our downtown. Council's going to review that as to whether or not they'd like to go forward this summer. Last year at this time, the idea was maybe we'd do it last summer while we're back where we were to talk about it. They're going to talk about the visitors' center, the conceptual land plan for the tramway gas station. We'll bring that back to the planning commission at your study session next week to give you a briefing, so you're up to date on that. And then the city staff's going to give the council an update on the budget tomorrow or tonight. It's going to be a fairly lengthy meeting, the way it's stacking up.
Very good. Comments? Staff reports, requests to the commission first this time.
Doug, do you know about what time the fashion plaza will come up on the agenda tonight? Best guess?
Depends on how many people show up for the adjourned meeting. My best guess would be sometime 7:30 to 8:30.
Thank you.
Commissioners, anything else? Mr. Schoburg?
Just a report on the, this development task force that I've been participating in now for a number of months. There've been a long, long series of meetings. I have the final recommendations here, and I had intended to bring copies to pass out to the commission members today, and didn't, forgot about it. But I'll bring a copy of these recommendations to our next study session and pass them out. And I think the next study session's going to be lengthy, so maybe I'll hold off on maybe touching on some of these issues until we have a better opportunity to do it. But I'll have the recommendations at the next study session. The process has not been, there's going to be one more meeting, I'm told, on April 1st to discuss what to do with these recommendations and how to present them. And I think there's going to be some sort of a presentation by some of the members of the task force to the city council, and then the further dissemination of the recommendations will be the subject of that next meeting. And rather than take everybody's time to go through these recommendations, I think it would be more efficient to pass out the recommendations, and everybody can look at them. And after you've had them for a while, we might take a look and see if anybody has any comments or questions on what's in there.
Doug, can staff assist Mr. Schoburger in making copies and disseminating those to the commissioners?
In fact, what we might do is put these in the packet for the study session, so people will have an opportunity to look at them when they're looking at their packet for the study session, if the packet's not going to be too overwhelming.
We always try not to give you too much written material in study sessions, so...
There might be an opportunity for everybody to just look at it, and then we can, we can take maybe a few minutes if we have them at that study session to discuss some of the recommendations.
All right. Mr. Evans, do you have any further comments, staff reports?
No, sir.
All right. Nothing further, then? Meeting adjourned.